I cannot complain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And raise your hand.
I don't know. I just, I probably might be. Anybody sick tonight? Hold on. Listen, listen.
And welcome to everybody. This is the, uh, uh, March third meeting of the board of supervisors. And tonight we have a limited number of people in the room. And on this day because we do, the leaders in place of these are in honor of silence. Ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, united, individual with liberty and justice for all. There is a moment of silence for our police, first responders, or fire, and those who serve in our militaries that protect us every day. Thank you. There is screaming folks tonight, uh, as usual. And for those who want to say something to us, at least they'll open their microphones. The people that are in the screaming world can see who's talking, who's talking. Because if you're talking back there, nobody has any idea what's... They can't hear you number one and number two. They don't know who you are. So, that said, uh, as far as the chairman's report is concerned, I had announced before, the Mountwood Institute is the first meeting will be April twenty-third, was agreed to through a meeting that they had, where the people rolled together that were involved in this. The Milltown Dam Reduction and Reservoir Enhancement was submitted to Pennsylvania DEP on February eighteenth, which needed to be done in order to, uh, extort it. Uh, and last but not least, we, we once again did that in a meeting prior to this meeting. It was regarding police labor matter, which we're permitted to do. Uh, is there anybody here that wants to speak to us about a, a matter that's not on the agenda? Okay, that's good. Uh, the chief is here. Are you ready to do your report?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bush, what are you...
Mr. Shane, uh, you said matter or not on the agenda. I apologize, I have not been on these meetings for the last ten years. I'm very good. Uh, out of order. I apologize, Madam Chief, and for non-agenda items, everything is...
Yeah, you're in your twelve, you're in your twelve days.
No, no, no. Not, not relates to what I'm gonna speak about.
Oh, you mean something else?
Yes.
Uh, why don't you do this? Do me a favor. Can you sit down and let her, because she wants to get down to a meeting.
Well, actually, I apologize.
She, she'll do, she won't be very long. She's not very long. Come on up. And she has to go to another meeting after this. That's the only reason I'm saying that. It's nothing to do with you or anybody else.
She'll say it now.
Uh-oh. You broke it. If you broke it, you pay for it.
Okay. Okay, there's several items that I'd like to bring to your attention this evening. The first one is for those of you who've been following the news, uh, there was a standoff at the Dames Inn that ordered us, West Goshen and our police department. And, uh, I'm happy to report that about five minutes ago, the individual was taken into custody. He was a homicide suspect wanted out of Lancaster County.
Yeah, it was on the news.
Yeah, it was on the news this evening. Yeah, so our officers are finally clear from that scene. Uh, the second thing I'd like to bring to attention is, now that the weather has started to warm up, we're starting to see trends that are normally associated with warm weather, thefts from vehicles. So, again, we remind everybody, out of your car, lock it up. And concerningly, uh, in East Goshen, we had actually a theft of a vehicle. Within the last twenty-four hours, an individual left their keys in their car, and the individual took the entire vehicle. So, please, help us to help you, and take valuables out and lock up. And lastly, I'd like to make one other announcement. A charity drive. In last month's meeting, we announced that we were doing a charitable drive to collect diapers, clothing, et cetera, for babies and infants, uh, who find their way unfortunately either to a domestic violence shelter with their mother, or in a rehabilitation treatment center with their mother. Um, we're very, very proud to say that, once again, the generosity of our residents is overwhelming. Uh, we hope to have something posted on our Facebook within the next two to four days with the volume of everything that you so generously donated. I know that there are people in Chester County that are struggling, and thanks to you, the struggle's not so bad. Um, any questions from the board first?
Was anybody hurt, uh, over in West Goshen?
No, no one was hurt.
Good job.
Taken into custody without any injuries anywhere. Any question?
The, um, charity drives, they still ongoing?
No, unfortunately, I mean, if you drop it off in the next two days, we will be happy to accept it. Um, we've already reached out to the recipients of that, and we're starting to split it up so that everybody can receive it.
Right.
Chief, I was just gonna, ooh, that's right, sorry. Um, I was just gonna ask, can you tell us where this vehicle had been, um, stolen? Give us a general idea?
I'd actually refer everybody to our crime watch to get real details of it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's our preferred method of doing that.
Perfect, thank you.
And with the board's indulgence, I'd like to make a few other remarks. This evening, there's an individual on the agenda who would like to speak about our department. And first of all, I would say, I welcome that. We are public servants. We serve you, and we are always receptive to what you have to say about how we perform our job. Secondly, I want to reassure residents that when we get a complaint, we investigate it thoroughly and professionally. And if the allegations are serious, or there is some concern that we cannot conduct an unbiased investigation, we reach out to a separate agency and ask that they conduct an independent investigation. So, we are receptive always to your feedback. And lastly, I'd like to say, I'm very proud of the men and women who serve as part of the West Town, East Goshen Regional Police Department. I think you should be too. Less than nine percent of all law enforcement agencies in Pennsylvania are accredited through the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. We're one of them. To be accredited, you have to reach a hundred and thirty-two separate standards. And that's why a lot of law enforcement agencies do not do it. The standards are too high. But when it comes down to it, standards and certifications aren't as meaningful as the way that we treat and interact with our residents. The people here tonight, and hopefully the people that are watching this meeting, have interacted with all officers, or someone very close to them has. We ask that you formulate your opinion of this police department based upon the reality of that interaction, and not the unsubstantiated words of one individual.
Chief, uh, I was gonna... It's perfectly fine to say that. I didn't know that was gonna happen. Uh, I think what's, your fairness is, because I, I think most of us know there was some kind of a speeding incident and some conversation at, at the police office. I don't know any more than that. And I don't know if anybody knows any more than that, but fairness to Abbas, since you went first, if he wants to, I'll give you the opportunity. If you were gonna start your thing now and finish it, when the chief is here, that's fine, I would have to ask you to stay.
Oh, I'm happy, I was planning to say.
If you wanna do it now, I think it's...
And I knew I was not gonna have an opportunity to respond, because I did not want to not always...
Yeah, Abbas, the only thing I'm gonna say is, the, it's now almost quarter after seven.
I'm really fast.
The, 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 the most time we're gonna spend on this is fifteen minutes at the most, and I'd prefer less.
It wouldn't be that much, okay.
Okay, well, the chief is walking away, and Abbas is coming up. I just wanted to say thank you, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Did you, uh, uh, uh...
Who had to see?
Um, okay, there you go. Um, I just wanted to say that I had an opportunity to do a couple of ride-logs with our, um, officers over the past few weeks. And I have to say that the kindness, the, um, compassion that they showed with some of the people that they encountered, that we encountered, was exemplary. I just could not be more proud of our fine officers. So, thank you very much for, uh, for being a good role model.
Let's, let's have the board listen to both sides of this thing, and then we'll make some course of action if we think something's necessary. Remember, you guys can go back and forth for a little while, we'll do whatever you wanna do. Uh, but this is a matter that we, we know a little bit about. It's, it's unfortunate if you're here for other reasons, you're just gonna have to listen to this. Abbas, Abbas Abari, sixteen thirteen, Moundley Road, uh, twenty, thirty-five-year resident
of West Goshen, I mean, East Goshen. Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity, distinguished members of the board. Uh, La Costa Nosa Mafia has a code, Code of Omerta, Code of Silence. The composition of that board is top-down, so the corruption's always from top-down. The Code of Omerta says you protect each other in the event of catastrophic activity. You cover up for each other. East Goshen West Town Police Department, top-down, leadership is from top-down. Blue veil of silence, blue brotherhood, thin blue line. When the corruption occurs, you have to investigate that, you have to investigate it properly. Internal affairs is a joke, sending it to the county detective is a joke. The only remedy in this situation is U.S. Code forty-two, section nineteen-eighty-five, deprivation of right under the color of law. For last thirty-five years, I've come to this department and this township, as you know, there's a corruption going on. Tampering with the police report, tampering with the evidence, not doing the facts, not investigating it properly. Uh...
Abbas, do me a favor. I know there's some of us that don't know anything about this. These people I hear don't know anything, and the people in their front don't know anything.
Let me finish, without interruption, thank you. Uh, there was a speeding incident in front of my property, McLaren. They were driving a hundred-twenty, a hundred mile, eighty mile, whatever. And I felt like that should be brought up to the attention of the police department. Now, remember, I have not had any contact for the last ten years, either this format or the police department. And I went to the, uh, police department town, uh, police department in West Town, and I asked the secretary if I can talk to the lieutenant, or, I'm sorry, shift sergeant. That's the standard operating procedure for me. The secretary was behind a bulletproof glass, she couldn't hear me. What, what, what do you want? What do you, are you a resident? I said, man, I just wanna talk to the shift supervisor. She became irate, walking, making a high tone of voice, screaming, you know, uh, waving her arm. And at that point, Lieutenant Cahill slammed the door open, walked out. I've known Lieutenant Cahill for thirty years. And he said, what's this all about? I explained to him, there is an incident, and I explained the incident. At that time, I had electronic device in my hand, I'm displaying that. Electronic device was openly and notoriously was displayed. There was no hidden device in my body, in my person. At that point, when I was explaining the circumstances, Lieutenant Cahill asked me if I'm recording him. I explained to Lieutenant Cahill, Cahill, First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution guarantees that. Furthermore, Turner v. Driver guarantees that. It's a settled law in this country, period, regardless of what your color of skin is. At that point, he screamed at me exactly, get out, get out. Deprive me of the due process of the law. Deprive me under the constitution of this great nation. Now, whether he was profiling me, or he was denying me the service which he did, at that point, uh, chief came out, and I was telling, Lieutenant Cahill let me educate in law. So, uh, our distinguished chief came out, and she said, Mr. Abari, educate me. We had a course of conversation, I explained everything. Subsequent to that, I went to the, uh, West Town Township Supervisor's meeting, impactively professional. Then I came to the, uh, Police Commission meeting, I explained everything. Uh, the, the arrogance you, your chief of police displayed is beyond imagination. You cannot treat the public like that. You cannot treat the minority resident like that. That was a direct, despicable act. And she turned around, I recorded the whole thing, you'll be more than happy, I have the recording here. You don't talk to the public like that. Furthermore, they're in violation of ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, disrepect the dissemination of information. Anyway, this is what, exactly what happened. For last thirty years, all of you know me, Mr. Shane knows me, Mr. Smith knows me, everybody else is, uh, brand new in this form, in this format. I've come to this township, I have investigated. In fact, I have investigated your own township manager. I've investigated this very building you are in. I found zoning violation on his house, which still exists. I found zoning violation in your own building. Public officials are in charge of health, safety, and welfare, should be above approach. If something comes to your attention, rather than attacking a victim, you should address that. If you have deficiencies in your system, this is not the first road you have to police department. You may wanna look into the background of some of the, uh, court proceeding. Now, chief may wanna say, we are perfect, we are not making any mistakes. Let us disclose all that information and the right to know act, which I have filed numerous right to know act. These matters can only be settled in court of law, not here, because I have to have an opportunity to examine their background information. This, this township has been engaged for thirty years. She threatened me in the last meeting, if you betray the character of my officer, I'm paraphrasing, we will sue you. I welcome that. I have signed that statement, this is a corrupt police department with a corrupt township. I have said that many times over the years, and I can back it up. So, if you're gonna do that, please do, but bear in mind, that gives me the right of discovery, that gives me the right of interrogatories. So, if you're not familiar with the U.S. district, Eastern, you may wanna look into that. Mr. Chairman, as I said, it will be a short, I appreciate this opportunity to be able to address this honorable board, and that is it. Thank you.
Abbas, before you leave the microphone, I just wanna make sure I heard what you just said. You're accusing the police department of corruption. I think you said you're accusing this township of corruption, is that correct?
For last, absence of the last ten years, I haven't, I have not been here.
Well...
The corruption, in my opinion, the corruption, in my opinion, is when you tamper with the minutes, when you tamper with the, uh, police structure, when you tamper with the building, uh, you guys violated the law tremendously bad. You built an area of refuge when Mr. Smith's office was there, I brought that to your attention. Gardler handrail is missing, uh, the proper, uh, guardrail. I brought that to your attention, Mr. Smith remedied that. But I brought to the attention of, uh, this township that Mr. Smith's own home, zoning officer and the township manager is in violation of the law, in violation of your own ordinance. That's corruption to me. Corruption is when the, when the chief of police fails, fails, rather than pointing a finger, asking Mr. Lieutenant Cahill, why do you scream at me when he has every right to come and file a complaint? That is what I'm saying. That is corruption to me.
Okay, I, 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 right now, I'm just trying to separate the policeman from the township. As far as I'm concerned, ten years is a long time. And except for myself and Mr. Smith, including the chief, there's no one in this board just whispering around prior to that. So, uh, I would like to say, I don't agree, but nonetheless, you have your own opinion, and you're entitled to your own opinion. Now, having said that you said what you said, the chief has said what she said, what are you asking this board to do?
I don't think anything that this board can do if they're, if they're not open. Uh, remember, alcoholic anonymous, uh, they, they say, the first thing to do is admit you have a problem. If you take that, uh, methodology, this township does not wanna accept they have a problem. When I bring issues to your attention...
What problem does this township have?
Well, it's in, should I go on? I have fifteen minutes.
Where's the problem?
At this point, first of all, in your own building.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, that's a different matter. We're talking about the, we're talking about a particular subject matter. You came here to complain about speeding and the lack of taking, being taken care of when it went to the police department in West Town. That's all I know. So, the only matter that's on the agenda tonight is that incident. And I'm asking you, that what is it that you want us to do relative to that? You had your chance to say what you said, the chief said what she wanted to say ahead of that. Now, I don't understand, maybe it's just me, but I don't understand what you're asking us for.
I have done a number of FOIA requests from the police department.
Number what?
FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. And the chief has taken, because she has a right to do, thirty days have a legal review. I want the video order released, I want all the information, all the, uh, filing that they have done. One other thing in the past I've been concerned with, that's why you see me with cameras. I don't walk around anywhere, any contact with the police department, if I don't run a camera. Because when it comes to them, they lie, they put a false report in, and there's nothing, I have to back it up. Bear in mind, my cameras are not Muslim. My cameras speak perfect English, and my cameras are made in Japan. So, that is the factual statement. So, when you put that against the police officer's report, then you can find corruption. Then you can find tampering with the official government document, which is a felony. So, when I said to you, Code of Omerta, it's the same code as the police department. They protect each other. Absence of video recording, absence of any documentation, I cannot proceed any further than what I have stated to you.
Okay, I, I, from a legal standpoint, I don't know if it's still, or, or other matter, but it seems to be there's an issue between you and the police department. I, I still haven't heard if you're asking us for anything other than listening to you, which I think we did respectfully. Uh, other than that, I, I don't know what to do. Uh, with that said, anybody here at the board want to chime in? Because I have no idea what to do.
No.
I would say that the matter is between you and the chief and the department. If you chair to sue, based on whatever matters you, you wanna sue, you're welcome to do that. I, I, I know of nothing that we can do to help you in this. I was not there, I did not see the speaking, I was not at the police building when this place opened. I, I personally have no idea who's telling the truth, and what truth, what their truth is to be told. So, uh, I think it's a matter between the chief, representing the police department, and you as an individual. And whatever you choose to do legally, you're welcome to do. And I assume the chief would respond accordingly.
On the date of this incident?
Is there anything that you said, what you have not been able to give that you should have, you should, you should have had?
No. On the day that the incident occurred, Mr. Abari, I met with him, and I gave him a complaint form, and to date, he has not submitted it back to us. The right-to-know request is under review by our attorney. We have responded to at least, um, he, he submitted fifteen requests. I believe that he has received responses back on all but seven of them.
How many were there?
Fifteen, to our department.
That's even. And is that necessary for whatever arrangement takes place?
Uh, Mr. Abari has indicated that he does not wanna file a complaint until he has all the right-to-know request information back.
Mr. Shane, it is inappropriate for any individual engaging the investigation, proper investigation, such as myself, to form an opinion, to form an opinion, to form an opinion without properly investigating all the pertinent document. You cannot walk around like this and ask me, you know, what's in front of you. Based on that information, Madam Chief has every right under the law, personal right to know act, to exercise her legal right. I cannot formulate what direction I'm gonna take or what I'm gonna do. What I can tell you, I have zero trust on this township's police department, under her leadership, to do a proper investigation under any circumstances. Batch doesn't investigate batch. Remember this paradigm.
Well, as I said, no one had ever come before this board with the same idea that you have in that there's corruption within the police department. I'm, I'm not sure of this definition, direct definition of corruption, but that's, I'll leave that alone. I, I think at this stage it came, whatever you want to do, when you wanna do it, is your choice. Whatever the chief has to do in response to that is her choice. And as far as I'm concerned, this is a legal matter between you and the, and the police department, and it has to be resolved that way.
Mr. Shane, just remember, you are providing consideration to the entity that causes the injury. I'm not a lawyer, but you may wanna consult with your attorney. Whenever you provide, excuse me, whenever you provide consideration, you are a party to that. You have to take, you took a oath of office, and you have to understand what that oath of office...
I understand the oath of office, fine. I'm just saying to you, you have offered us no suggestion on what you would like us to do in this matter. Therefore, the only thing I can say is it's a matter between you and the police department headed by our chief this evening. That's all I can say. I haven't said any more than that. If that's something I shouldn't have said, I'll say it.
That's fine. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also, uh, Mr. Hertzler, thank you for listening at the Police Commission meeting, I appreciate it. Thank you for this honorable vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You go. Much needed. Good. Thank you. Uh, ruin that other matter, you wanna bring that up? Your other matter, whatever you were gonna talk about?
Yes. Abbas Abari, sixteen thirteen, Moundley Road, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the, with respect to the other matter, uh, I'm a real estate inspector, uh, you have certain, you have certain...
Wait, wait, sorry. Chief, wait, wait back, talk about it.
Just wanted to shake my hand.
May I proceed? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you have certain health, welfare, and safety issue in your building, I brought it to your attention. Uh, there's a gardler handrail in front of the screening, that is loose. I highly recommend installing a rod iron or something that can take, in the, in the event somebody falls in there, you have a bunch of glass or chairs, uh, stacked up against that. In the event that falls and hits that glass, that is not a tamper-proof glass. It can fall and hurt somebody and cause injury. The remedy you have done, which I remember, if I go back to my records, by the way, I have every video recording of it for the last thirty years. Uh, I brought that to the attention of township manager and your staff, and they didn't take it seriously. The handrail you have in there is loose. If somebody, a child or somebody gets hurt or fall, and that glass can fall down and hurt somebody coming into the building. That creates a liability. At this point, since I instructed, giving that information, you have a constructive environment, there is a serious health, safety, and welfare exists in your own building. If you come on one of my job site, your township inspector, I will fail that inspection. If you fail me on my own site, how can you pass that on your own site? So, that's one. I saw some thread missing on the steps, that's a trip hazard that can be addressed, because you have people coming in and out, and that provides, that, that's a concern for health and safety and welfare. So, those are the items. And also congratulate, uh, the township, they implemented that ADA, that you can hit that button and opens the door, that was one of my other concerns. I don't know how long it took to implement that. And there are some other issues with respect to your own township manager's real estate, his own principal resident. My opinion is, if the township manager is a symbol of what we should do all within the bounds of law, is in violation of your own ordinance. And, but, three days ago, uh, I was driving by and took some video recording from publicly accessible road, publicly accessible road. So, I highly recommend hiring a third party. I did investigate him before, some of the information I got was bits and pieces. Uh, basic opinion is when I say this township is corrupt, in my opinion, corruption doesn't have to be like tenant's square corruption. It doesn't have to be like a chief of police of tenant's square. Corruption exists everywhere. Somebody has to do this, bring it to their attention. So, that's, that's what I'm bringing, so, but I will pursue this investigation further. Thank you.
Let me say, this way, if you're, I'm sure Rick will have himself or somebody with the spec looking through you tonight, I can tell you if you wanna stick around, that we're gonna drill with a trend, to trend issue tonight, which we recognize is a problem, and we're gonna, we're gonna award a contract for that tonight, so that you don't have to worry about that. And anytime that you have something that you think is a foul, if you don't get the cooperation from the township, which I think you will, but if you don't, come here, bring it to me, and I'll make sure it gets done with whoever's chairman of the board.
One last one, if you indulge me for one minute, your video, your, uh, YouTube channel, uh, that YouTube channel's a disgrace. Nobody can hear you, nobody can understand. My recommendation would be, West Goshen Township, Derek, contact him, you guys need to buy new equipment, put it where my camera is. They, you don't need to record everybody's head, you need to record this public. If that's what you really want public to know, that's the best way to handle it. When I listen to your, uh, podcast or record or broadcasting, it gives me headache, you can't hear anybody. It's totally outdated, that thing's a joke. That thing is a fifty-years-old, uh, technology. There are better products in the market.
We, we, we know that, and we are invested in it.
Mr. Shane, as always, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, back to the...
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
We have now, we have now taken care of...
Mr. Chairman, I just got a text from someone who said that we can hear is perfectly fine today. I just got a text from someone who said that we can hear us perfectly fine today.
Thank you. That takes care of item twelve A, and it takes care of the public hearing offered, not others, non-agenda. Put up the microphone, please. If you are a little over the limits, we will move you back to the end of the meeting, but it's not too long. Make sure you do yourself. Now you have to talk real close. Can you hear me now?
Yep. My name is Mike Ivy. I'm at seven nineteen Jane Road. I was informed that my name, Avos, was brought up last week about Mike Bragney. Uh, Avos had said that I said Mike Bragney said he was a terrorist. No one such time that ever be said.
Well, let me, let me, I don't want to stop you, but I'm going to stop you.
Okay.
What, what is it? Why are you here to tell us that? What is it that?
Because I'm not as proper as most people that come here. But if somebody says something I said and I didn't say it, I'm going to say something about it.
Okay, that's fine. Do you have anything you want us to do? Not doing, I want to make sure we understand.
Okay, I will. I just want to let you know that that Mike Bragney did not say that. Uh, and he is not racist. And I know a lot of people that are adult cops in here. And I personally know Kay Hill. I know a bunch of them. I've never seen them act that way at all. And I've seen them on and off the field. And they've always been a cop twenty-four seven. Again, that's all for short.
Thank you.
Avos could say you haven't seen me.
We'll see when I bring my name up. Mr. Shane, everybody.
You're doing good job. You're done. You're done.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
We're going to go back to the agenda. Mike, uh, Avos, if you were to talk in the public comment and respond to that, you have to wait to the end.
Okay.
Uh, there's no public hearings tonight, uh, and I, there's no financial report tonight. Is that right, John? And we will go to the minutes and treasurer's report. I found something. John does not believe this. He smiled over there and he probably goes smile all his way to bed tonight. But I found three grammatical errors. So I told John what they were tonight, and he smiled and laughed. He says, I don't believe we have another Janet. And I guess we have another Janet. But other than that, I did not find anything else wrong that need to be corrected with the minutes. And I would entertain a motion for it. No move. Second, comments or questions from the board? From the audience? Yes, Avos.
Avos for Barry sixteen thirteen.
No, don't go that way. Don't go to Mike Ivy's comments.
Oh, no, no, no. It's just relevant to that. I, I address Mr. Ivy's comment later. Yeah. Is this board has any kind of redundancy with respect to, if there's a discrepancy on the minute? Uh, in the previous years when I attended, there was a lot of discrepancy. What I call creative right, legally tampering with the official government document. Do you guys take a recording of this for a purpose of backup?
No.
No?
Particular thing qualifies for that, whether we get it or not is another matter. But this is all about us working up to the process to get to approve going after this, this amount of money from that trust fund. Which we wouldn't, I'm sure, will tend to do before you see things over. Does anybody else have any comments or questions up here? Anybody out in the audience? Boss, you gonna do this for everyone tonight? Because I might as well get a seat just over here.
I have a legal right to do that.
I know, I know, you have your question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I wear a gas detector on my person when I'll do an inspection. It requires certification, requires training. You just don't go buy it and you have a gas detector. Could you please tell me whoever's gonna use this, is he gonna get the, or he or she's gonna get the proper training so he can use this equipment?
Yes, the vendor will provide that training. I mean, I can't speak knowledgeably about what level of training it is, but I know that Lionville Fire Department, they got one, I'm not sure if it was funded through this energy transfer grant program or not, but I know they got one, there's some communication between Mark and, and Mr. Minahan up there. And they, I remember seeing an email on the issue, he said, yeah, that they're coming on next week or something to train. So again, I can't speak knowledgeably about what that training entails, but it's not just, here's the machine, you know, go.
I highly recommend contact power of Carlisle, Carlisle, Pennsylvania, that's where my chapter is, and they can explain what the proper procedure for that, they have an ample qualification certification. And you may want to reach out to somebody that's more knowledgeable, rather than waiting until 11th hour and everybody runs around, what do we do? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for the comment. I, Mr. Chair, I'd authorize staff to apply, make a motion, authorize staff to apply for funding through energy transfer. There's first responder fund for two gas leak detectors and calibration equipment, as recommended by staff.
Do you second?
I would second that, but there was a gentleman in the back who wanted to make a comment a moment ago.
I know, I would let you come up and make a comment, I'll make one and make a point up here.
Did you want to come up?
Didn't you appreciate it? No. Oh, just stretching.
I must have gone, I missed it.
The reason that we're doing this is for the benefit of our own people. As some of you may know, we have many people in our Public Works Department that are certified firefighters with, or anties from West Whiteland that work for us during the day. What we have done is allow, because there's a lack of shortage of volunteers and everybody else during the day with respect to firefighters and anties. We, they, you will see often on a job, there's a fire truck there on the job, and it's there specifically in case there's a call, because they stop with their doing if they can, and jump on that truck and go, and you're generally the first people, people that are there on an incident that's occurred, occurred many times since they've been doing this. The people that now have caught up with what we do find it very appropriate, because if there was a problem in their neighborhood, the truck would be right there, but that's not what it's for. It's basically for them to act as a fire agent, train fire company agent, go wherever they need to go if the whistle goes off. So that's what that's for. So if you see one during the day, where it seems like it's in a funny place, it's there for a reason. But this particular gas mask is for those, those two gas masks are for those.
Gas detector and the motion is there. I put a place a motion.
And we'll second it as well.
Second, anybody out in the audience has a question, Mr. Collins? No? Well, there's a favor of the motion. Thank you very much. The next item is item 11B, it's the parking down on Marsh Road.
Ricky? I'll take it. John, yeah, back in November, we got a petition that was written by Mr. Pizzo, who's in the audience, signed by a number of residents of Marsh Lane, asking township to prohibit non-resident parking on Marsh Lane. Obviously, we can't do that on a public street. Instead, it was suggested that we restrict parking, obviously, restrict parking on the street, whether that was overnight or around the clock. We, at the June, January 6th meeting, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to come up with the recommendation. We convened a meeting about a month ago, a little over a month ago. We did invite all the residents of Marsh Lane, as well as the 600 Reservoir Road, who allegedly is the, the friends of his kids are the ones that routinely park on Marsh Lane. Unfortunately, there were no residents of Marsh Lane there. Mr. McQuaid, I want to say his name was, from 600 Reservoir was there. In addition, Ted Lewis from the Traffic Safety Unit was there, our fire marshal was there, Mark Miller was there, Mark Gordon was there. And we sort of just talked about it, you know, it was determined, there's no public water on Reservoir Road there, so you need, if there's a fire emergency, you do need a pumper truck. But even with a pumper truck and a live hose, you can still get a fire truck down that street with cars parked on one side. So there wasn't an immediate concern from the fire folks there about, about access of fire trucks or, you know, or ambulances. Ted Lewis, Sergeant Lewis did agree to sort of basically spend the next three or four weeks and just have his patrol officers monitor the situation and, and report back to the township if they believe that there was any public safety concerns about the current parking situation on that street. A couple of weeks ago, I spoke with Sergeant Lewis again, and he sort of, he reported that they, the Wego cops did not see any, any issues there. So it's the township's recommendation that we maintain this as a perfectly public road with, and not restrict parking at this time. I would say, before I go, I know Mr., Sergeant Miss Clemens, obviously, is not here, did want there to be some restriction. Obviously, Mr. Pizzo and Mrs. Pizzo are here. And I did get a call from Miss Gay, who was at the end of Marsh Lane, and she is in favor of restrictions too. Those are the only three residents I've heard from on there.
Does anybody want to talk to John? Please, please come. Let's do your address and name.
Good evening. Mr. John Pizzo, 1402 Larch Lane.
Mr. John Pizzo, 1402 Larch Lane, resident 43 years in the East Coast. I got a little business in my house. When I opened the business 30 years ago, they told me I had parking for my customers. These people that had this bread and breakfast across the street from us, these kids come with the packs, three or four or five cars, they park there. So does that mean that my patients, my customers can also park on the street then? That's, is that, is that the way it goes?
Yeah, so it's a public street.
Okay, that's all I wanted to do. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
This is the first I've heard that it was a bed and breakfast.
Well, I think it is, because there's six, seven cars, guys were back.
We were, we were told there were parties.
I, I don't think it's wise. Um, okay, it's my opinion. They can say whatever they want. Right? Thank you. How's your labor? Come along, good?
The question should be entertained, that Mr. Pizzo has a proper permit to conduct such a business, is premise. Home occupation, home-related business. What's the nature of that business, and has anybody investigated that? If he's complaining about taking publics right away, legal right away, anybody can park, it's a public road. So in an absence of any legal opinion, or absence of any study by a qualified engineer, I don't think you can implement any law restrict public access to publicly funded road.
And? I've already made, just to say, you know, I've already made, to talk to Ricky about the, 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 the.
The question, Mr. Pizzo's address was 1402 Larch Lane?
Check on me now.
Larch Lane, thank you. I would inquire about that, I'd provide further investigation and I'd give you the result of that.
Okay, Leo Sinclair, 2017, North Blackford Lane. First of all, you mentioned the police did a evaluation of the situation a couple of times in a short period of time. I, I know this gentleman, and I know this street talking about, called up, got the Reservoir Road, and there has been times where I personally witnessed potential accidents. People trying to come out between two sets of cars on both sides of the road. I, I think, I don't know when they're the busiest at the resident. I suspect potentially maybe during the spring or summer, you know, come back to the situation and take a look again, perhaps be more cars there than you foresee. We get a really good feel for what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, we, we spoke with Mr., Leo, that's a good point, and we spoke, you know, Mr., I don't want to say McQuaid, I'm not sure if that's his name, but it is, I mean, he was very open about it, is his, the friends of his kids, who, and his kids are in college, so it's usually on this break, so it really hit a peak around, you know, the Christmas holidays, you know, presumably, you know, once summer, you know, rolls around, it'll be an issue again. One of the, one of the key things is that Wego now has the information from, about contact information, so if there is an emergency, those cars can be, you know, relocated.
John, I should point out that it says at the end of the memo and the staff recommendation, however, to the extent that residents believe that parking on Larch Lane ever becomes a problem, they should be encouraged to contact the police. So if you see an issue, call the police.
To item 11C, the ABC goals, I think most of you know, have been here. Each year, we have a meeting, and the ABCs, the authorities, boards of commissions, report out to us what they did during the year, including the goals that were accomplished based on last year's record, last year's goals. This year, we have had the same thing occur. We then take a look at this, I should say, Rick takes a look at it, and recommends goals in addition to those that they had proposed that are in compliance with our comprehensive plan. It's very important to do that, because it's the only way to get the comprehensive plan, all the way done, what it needs to do over a 15-year period of time, you're talking about. So tonight, what we're being asked to do is to look at what recommendations are for those additional goals that are, to be as tied in with the ABCs that have already presented the goals to us in their, in their meeting. So I don't think this will take too long. I want to compliment Rick on what he has done, he's done a lot of work to put this together. I went through this and the comprehensive plan, I, I don't, I don't myself see any changes at this, I mean, nobody else does, but I think he's done a great job in doing this. Does anybody else have any comments?
I have no additions to the, what is the?
We took a motion that we adopt, the recommendation.
I would make the motion to adopt the 2020 ABC Conference of Plan update, as prepared by Rick.
Your second?
Second motion.
Very much a Jerry Comer's question for the board, just with the clarification, it's not an update of the comprehensive plan.
Thanks, thank you.
Just to see, I didn't use enough, I didn't use enough.
Thank you.
More change.
That's impressive.
I don't even want to go there, folks, so. That's an inside joke for those that aren't here, but then on one of these days, I'll become public again. So I, you'll never hear the shame of utter those words, I can tell you, you'll never hear it, Julian, never, but I do that. Who the hell would ever talk about town center again? You can do it something?
Frankly amended.
Oh, my God.
Would you be kind enough?
The goals of the ABC.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second that. You know, just to be honest, I'll now have to go to confessions, so.
Okay, so Moses second, any comments?
Yeah, so any Congress questions for the board?
Autumn, Ricky's time.
From the audience? Boss, you might as well take a seat over here, it's the safest time.
It's been 10 years.
I know, you're getting your money's worth tonight.
I will be coming in regular basis.
I hope so. We missed you.
I, I know that. Mr. Chairman, this report that Mr. Smith was kind enough to compile, would that be available on a website?
Does he want to look it?
He, he, Tyler, Jen, I put it on a website.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, as always.
Okay, if you care of that, now we've done 12 days. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve?
We had to, we had to vote.
So what is it? So I said, oh, I'm sorry. What is the favor of the motion? Mike's making me very nervous, so we still hold. The next item is 12D, is to consider stormwater agreement for 12, stormwater agreement, stormwater agreement for 12, 10 Burning Bush Lane, there's a motion for me to sign off on those amendments.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board authorized the chair to execute the stormwater management operation maintenance agreement for 12, 10 Burning Bush Lane, as recommended by the staff.
Your second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Any other questions for the board? The audience? Anybody else besides a boss?
Thank you.
I think if a boss is going to probably come on everything tonight, so.
Absolutely. It's a good thing to participate in my civic duty. Mr. Chairman, would you be kind enough, or any of the staff member, to articulate, what is this all about? Just very short.
I could tell you, Ricky, you're a.
Very short.
Ricky doesn't.
Under, under the stormwater management, stormwater management orders. If you have to put in a stormwater facility over a certain size, you have to record the agreement that you know, against the property, that the facility's there, that you're aware of it, and it has to be maintained. And that agreement has to be executed by the chair and the property, and it is recorded against the property.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, kindly.
Next is the, Ole, Mr. Chair, a motion?
Aye.
The next item is 10D, is the, it's 10C, I mean, is consider a resolution 2020-191, regarding disposal records, is there a motion to approve? Your second?
Second.
Any other questions for anybody? I, for those that don't know this, there's a predetermined date under which you can get rid of some things, and other things you have to keep record of forever. And that's what this resolution is about, go ahead, Boss. That's what this resolution is about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was heavily involved in kind of township issue, and I researched that in a great deal. There were two separate issue, one was a police chief, as it relates to alleging involvement of the township manager, I strongly suggest alleged, you are innocent or proven guilty in this country. With respect to, I know there's a way of disposing this record forever, and one of the problem DA's office had, they could, they could only go so many years back. My, my suggestion would be, or if I can ask, given the climate, given the climate of corruption, given the climate of financial improprieties in various organizations, wouldn't it be prudent to spend a little bit of money, see if we can document these things electronically, and we keep it maybe 10 years, 15 years?
Mr. Boss, we have a document management system, and all of the, all of the invoices that are paid, as well as a copy of the canceled check, are scanned on a regular basis in the document management system. So what we're talking about is the hard copies of those documents. The electronic copies are kept in perpetuity on that document management server.
Thank you, sir. Is that your retention policy, data retention policy, or that document destruction policy?
Well, we're, we, we have a finite amount of space in the basement, that's the issue, and if we kept everything in perpetuity, we wouldn't have, be able to walk around in there. So what we do is we follow the Pennsylvania, the state guidelines, it's issued by like the commission-owned libraries or something like that.
That's historical museum commission that handles the document management protocols that under legislature act.
So we're just following exactly what the state does, and by extension, on your other municipality. Put your points, mate. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, is there, anybody else have any comments up here? All those who favor the motion? Next is 12D, Boss, you might have to walk up there. It would make me, make my day if you didn't walk up. This is the one that's going to deal with replacing of the treads. Is there, Ricky, you wanted to talk about there, John?
Well, no, it's, it's, so, yeah, obviously, you can see it, Mr. Boss alluded to it, you walk up the front stairwell, you'll see clearly that top step, there's not, there's not tread there. Certainly, our biggest show pony day, these sessions on election day, would be helpful to have the tread in that stairwell replaced, as well as the tread in the stairwell that's sort of where I'm pointing, where people leave if they're voting in this room. We have a price of basically $8,437 for these two stairwells to retread through Bob Wagner's Flooring America. There were other flooring contractors that were contacting the area, did not respond, they weren't interested in doing a commercial job that small. Just to err on the side of caution, we actually have a third little-known stairwell that's kind of connects the Public Works lunchroom and the Public Works office hallway that the public never uses. So in order to basically stay below the Pennsylvania procurement guidelines, our requirements, we're proposing to defer that replacement of that tread until next year, and just do these two. The cost of that would be $8,437, and it could be done prior to election day on the 28th of April.
John, I was thinking about the treads. Are we, are we talking about treads that are replacing the structural component of the, not the riser, but the treads, or are we talking about replacing vinyl pieces on the, on the steps?
Vinyl pieces on the steps.
And we're talking about how much money to replace these? I, you know, I, I've been running up those steps, I'm 69 years old, I've been running up those steps for years.
Yes, that's why.
I haven't had an issue. I, I'm wondering how much money we're spending on vinyl treads.
Well, we'd like you to wear sneakers, you know.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm aghast at the amount of money that we're.
I'm aghast, I'll tell you what, I'm glad you said that, because I'm about ready to just say, this is insanity. We, we are $600 over the cutoff point, and we have to pull the other, the other stairwell that John's talking about off till next year. Now, I will guarantee that when we bid this next year, it'll be a low number, but it'll be higher than what we would have had to pay this year, just because of either inflation or it's a single, it's a single item. So to do this is just ridiculous. There's no reason, in fact, I would, I would like us, in fact, I'm asking the board to ask staff to write a letter to whoever you write to in the state, even if it's Julia or Julia's boss, that this is insanity, that doesn't enable us to do the whole job at one time, when we have to go back and probably end up costing us more money. So I would, I know we can't do anything but approve the money that we can approve tonight, it's under the limit, but I think in addition to that, I would like to have staff write to whoever you should write to, to say that this is ludicrous in its face.
We, we could write the letter, but again, it's state bidding law, and there's a.
I don't care.
I'll, I'll send the letter.
Make me feel better.
I'll send the letter. Strongly worded letter.
I think the cost is more than extraordinary, and I think the cost is corrupt, you've been using the word corrupt today. I think the whole game thing is corrupt, I, I've never seen a cost.
It's a, it's a, it's allegedly corrupt.
It's a, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the, the $8,000 expenditure?
No, can I actually ask a question before we even talk about that? So we're only $660 some dollars below, over rather, so is there any chance that we can go back to Bob Wagner and ask them to do the whole job for the $11,299? Is there any wiggle room in there?
This, this is the best place we're going to. And this, matter of fact, that was the challenge, to get anybody to give us a price to put the stairs up.
Is this in our budget for this year?
It's under the.
We, we generally budget, we budget money under, broadly under town building maintenance. It's, it's not, there wasn't, is it reciprocated, but there's a catch-all or stuff we have to do.
My concern is that it's a public safety issue, because we do have people coming in and out at this point in time, but I would really like to see Bob Wagner work with us a little bit. Is there any chance that we can, is there any wiggle room at all? You think, with the promise of?
Best monolax, it's the best price you want to get, and we can go back, the river. The risk we run is that when it loses another two weeks, and then all of a sudden it's election day, and that's a concern. I mean, the treads are as old as the building, the tread is 27 years old.
Again, we're talking about vinyl treads, you're sitting on the step.
You, me, Friday night.
Friday, Friday night.
Yeah.
On Friday night.
The concrete stairs are a very nice look.
Anybody make a motion?
Not yet.
Somebody better make a motion.
I'm nuts. My, my cast concerned about this, I want to listen to his concern.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize Bob Wagner's Flooring America to retread the front side stairwells that the township building cost $8,437. Your second, Eric, so we can talk about that.
Mike, are you going to second or are you going to vicepeak? Somebody, Jack, now second it. Is there any more commerce or questions up here from the audience who had my, boss? This would be, this would be, this would be, this could be really.
Mr. Lynch, I totally, I'm a licensed contractor. The only repair you need to do is the top staircase.
That's what I just looked at, there's some tape on.
Exactly. Chad's Linder, member of the Public Works, is very capable of handling this. Mr. Linder can do miracles. It's a $10 piece, it takes less than half an hour to install it. Let me finish, it's less than half an hour to install it. I don't know whether you have any other issue, I'm a real estate inspector, I'm a very keen eye, as I have pointed out, you know, deficiency on the westbound building. And also, the issue of liability, the reason most of these contractors, they don't return a call, because the municipal building and the liability is high. That's the only reason. They want to do the job, but the municipal building, a lot of liability. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had Chad look the stairs, walk over the stairs, we believe the stairs should be replaced, the tread should be replaced in our car, they're, they're crap, and based on our recommendation, we think it's appropriate to do it this time.
Neil?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to try to get some face time since you thought you were alive.
Well, it's your honor.
No, no, I, I just.
You want to do your damn hat yourself.
He was, he's a teen, what about me? I just did a quick look, I'm not a contractor. I do see what appears to be a metal plate on top, so I assume that that had something to do with it. My, my question is very simple. Is there an itemized bill for this work, for this, this much money, $8,000? Is there an itemized bill, is there, you know, hours?
We have assessed a bid from Wagner's to replace the treads.
Just, yeah.
Yeah, there, there was, there was an itemized price quote.
Itemized?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, I mean, I know I saw, I don't know, I think I gave it back to Mark.
Yes, we just.
I didn't get it.
We get it, we?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all those who favor the motion?
Aye.
Three to two, John.
No, is that three to two?
Two, two noses over, is that over here?
No. So it's two to three?
Three noses.
No.
Three noses.
So we're not replacing the treads.
Not approved. You guys got any suggestions as to what we do about the treads in the meantime, people will come in?
Uh, we'll know if we stop tape once. Again, the, and that will wait and see.
Well, it, well, well, there's, there's, Mr. Boss, is that correct? Leo, I know you just looked at it. I just, I mean, if, if, if this being, I know they're old, but I'm looking at the other treads that I run up every, every meeting and, and ramble down, the only one that I see right off the bat was this one at the top of the stairs. Can't we just give a, instead of duct tape, something more?
Substantial.
Substantial, just to correct, it is not the main item, I mean, maybe, maybe we defer this to the next meeting, and, and I'll come out and take a look, you know, just so, so I can be, you know, show me the wounds in the hand, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I hate being down on Thomas, but, again, I'm looking at these dollars, but it.
Are you asking, are you asking us to table this the next meeting?
May, maybe that's the best thing to do, but now, the next meeting is going to be after the election, is that correct?
No, the election's the 28th.
Let's table the next meeting, and let, may, maybe, you know.
All right, Mike, you need to put a motion.
Sometimes I'll, but I don't see, so maybe you'll show me, sorry.
You ought to vote it, you can't.
No.
You can't make a motion. You need it, you need it. You can do it now, it's not.
Gosh, we pulled the switch, it was gone, I didn't, I wanted to, I didn't want to save him, I, I, it's too late to pull the, you know, can't return it.
We voted against the motion. I would like to make a motion that we refer that, we denied this motion, like to make a motion that we revert back to staff and have them come back to the next meeting with the, you know.
So a motion to rescind this initial motion and come.
No, we already voted on it.
Okay, oh, I got it.
I'm making a new motion, a new motion, under Robert's rules, you know?
Yes.
Correct.
I see, you can quote the old Robert rules, or maybe.
You would have to make that motion, yes.
I did, I made a motion that we, that we recommend the, back to staff to readdress the issue with our. to readdress the issue with our treads on the stairway.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Comments or questions for the board? The audience?
Mr. Lynch, I'd like to congratulate you for your intestinal fortitude. It takes a great deal of common sense. It takes about $10, Loser Home Depot, it's a metal stair tread. For the record of a licensed contractor, I've done this at least 2,000 times.
You want to bid on it?
It takes one hour. It takes one hour to do it. I would love to do it for free of charge, but because of the conflict I have with the township, I refuse to do it. But somebody else can do it. You can call anybody. It's a 10 minutes or 15 minutes job. It will cost you no more than a service call, $125 service call. It will take no more than half an hour at the most. And it's done. I walked around. I walked up and down the steps. Why do you want to spend this kind of money? It's ludicrous.
And I appreciate the comment, Mr. Abbas. And my comment has no reflection on the manager, the assistant. This is, I just want to understand this better. There, it has no reflection on Rick or John.
Well, you and Rick and John and whoever, doing this, come back and comment.
Mr. Abbas, we'd be willing to, I think we'd be willing to waive the conflict, isolate it to the stair tread if you'd like to do that work.
For the record, I'm busy on a fairly large assignment. And honest to God, I would do it for free. I understand you're going to waive that conflict, but I'm on a large assignment right now.
All right, all right.
And it's just impossible for, I have commitments, basically. I have responsibilities and commitments, like, you know, nine to five, not, it's seven to 10, basically. But I make all the effort that I can show up here and put my two cents and give my recommendation. By the way, for the record, this is not the first municipal violation I find violation. And I'm assuming, I'm assuming she knows all about my endeavors, recent endeavors. If she has done her homework. Thank you. Mr. Herzog, any relation to real estate inspector, Mr. Herzog?
I believe so. I believe there's a distinct cause of...
He is an impeccably, impeccably top-of-the-line inspector and we are proud to have him as a member of American Society of Home Spectres. And I always refer him. Thank you.
Thank you, Winterfall. Unfortunately, he's not on his Christmas card list.
Well, not on anybody's Christmas card list.
Okay, now, just so everybody knows, that motion was defeated. It will be brought back when the table, when the next one's...
We have to go along with the...
No, it has to be brought back. What is the favorite motion? Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Everybody's like... Bye-byes, John. So we'll come back next time, Mike. Mike?
What? Oh, yes.
Coming back next time, right in charge.
I'm, I'm, I will give up my conclusions best.
Okay, the next item is, it's an interesting item. It might take a little bit of conversation. I will ask Rick to, it's item 12D for those that are following this.
Marty, since John has been, was on the advisory, actively involved in it.
I meant to say John.
John, I'll speak on this issue.
I meant to say John. So from now on, I'm going to have him sit over here and you sit over here because that's about the brief that this is...
Okay, so we received, we, at its meeting last Thursday, the Westchester area council of governance, or COG, formally accepted the energy transition report prepared by the Cadmus Group, a energy consulting firm that was hired by the COG via the six municipalities that make up the COG to evaluate how the region can get to 100% renewable electricity by 2035 and 100% renewable energy from all sources by 2050. In short, the report, so the actual final report, I think, will be delivered by Cadmus. There are a couple of very superficial final edits, but essentially what is in your packet is, except for a typo here or there, is essentially the final report. The report highlights 17 strategies for getting to those renewable energy and electricity goals. And they're broken down into four different categories. Things that we can do at the local level, what we call municipal supply mix categories. What we can do from a sort of marketing and community engagement standpoint. State-level options, this is working with Julia's office about legislative changes at the state level. And finally, what we're calling enabling strategies. So some of these strategies can be undertaken at the municipal level, so individually, by East Goshen or West Goshen or West Town or whoever. And some of these are best implemented at the, collectively, at the regional level. A simple example of something that's best initiated at the regional level is a power purchase agreement whereby various municipalities get together, find and go out to bid to find a, or RFP really, to find a contractor that can build an energy supply, a clean energy supply source for our municipal needs. But some, like putting solar panels on the roof, that would be obviously an individual strategy. So we have the sort of, the marching orders that the COG gave to the member municipalities is by its April 23rd meeting. The COG's April 23rd meeting is all municipalities would be in a position to report back to the COG about which of these 17 strategies it's interested in participating in and which it's not. So at this point, really, all that I think we should do is formally accept, that East Goshen just formally accept the, they should acknowledge the report and then defer this matter to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. They have their next meeting on Monday, March 23rd. They, you know, the reason they're set up is to advise the board of supervisors on sustainable, sustainability issues and obviously, energy falls into that bucket. Gosh, I'm getting a lot of feedback. I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you, Leo. So really, the recommendation that I have is if there's going to be a motion, it's, so in your, basically in your April meetings, I think we will have to have more in-depth conversation about these strategies and which ones are, which ones we should pursue and which ones we should. But I think the board should make a motion to direct the Sustainability Advisory Committee to come up with recommendations for which of the 17 strategies the township should pursue.
John, are you suggesting you can wait until acknowledged, accept this?
Yeah, so it's acknowledged receipt, so it's the last paragraph here. Acknowledged receipt of the report, forward a copy.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
That we should talk about. And I can make a motion that the board formally acknowledged receipt of the report from Cadmus and forward a copy of it to, in its final version, to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for its recommendations and comments so that the board can act accordingly at its first meeting in April.
I'm excited that...
Well, when we get the actual final report, I think it'll be tomorrow. We'll send it around to you and we'll also be posting it on the COG website.
Sorry.
So, but as I said, it's, other than a typo here and a formatting thing there, it's, the context hasn't changed.
I'd like to, I just want to say...
You started seconding.
Let's second it. First, John, thank you for your work on the advisory committee. In my capacity representing the township, East Goshen Township on the Westchester area council of governance, I'm also serving as chair of the COG this year. The member municipalities, two Goshens, West Town, East Bradford Township, West Whiteland Township, DeBorough, Westchester, have collectively agreed in the past year to engage Cadmus to perform this study to establish a foundation, some groundwork for what are included in these, in this study as very, well, they're very optimistic goals, but I think we need to have some goals. Achieving a goal is a great thing, but approaching a goal is good and having to absolutely 100% achieve a goal can be a detriment. To have 2035 as a all-renewable electric community and then an all-renewable community by 2050, we see a lot of numbers and goals set out there by other entities. At the local government level, this is somewhat groundbreaking. It's a big step, but it is a, a, the tread we're going to land on is uncertain except that as a community, we have to begin to think about and start to act upon the big picture that we're hearing in the news every day. No matter what your perspectives are on climate change and warming and environment, we know a lot of things are happening with seven and a half billion people that we need to be thinking about these things. At the municipal level associated with our COG, the protocol that we have is that after the COG has, as a body, has acted upon a particular program or has a recommendation, it goes back before each municipality to consider whether they want to participate in a program, accept it and move forward. There are, there are some big lifts. For instance, the power purchase agreement. As a COG, we are going to start to research what an RFP would look like for that. We're not issuing an RFP. That would be coming back to municipalities at that point in time, but we want to research what an RFP would look like for that. That's a big lift. There are individual actions identified in the study for each municipality concerning certain renewable aspects, so solar, solarizing certain facilities, et cetera. The legislative lift is one that we've kind of put off a little bit from engaging with our local representatives, our state representatives. But this is a, it's a long-term study and we're going to be picking at it each year for the years ahead. It will probably evolve. We will have, some municipalities are going to participate in some aspects and some that may not. We may have other partners. We may, in the context of the power purchase agreement, ultimately move to a larger scale in working with Chester County. Chester County has recently formed a sustainability advisory group and they're going to be looking at things like this. As a COG, we may present and discuss with the commissioners at an upcoming meeting in the future. But this is a first step and at the moment, it is not requiring the township or any of the member municipalities to spend any more money at this point in time in either accepting this plan or just what we've done tonight, acknowledging it and seeing what our sustainability committee thinks about some of the strategies and pursuing them. So we're all on a learning curve and there's a long way to go, but I think this is a reasonable start for local government. I know there are other communities that are watching what we're doing and we'll see what happens from there. I just thought I'd give a little brief about this past year and where we are.
I want to say something myself. Is anybody else going to say anything?
Hey, John.
You want to do it?
Okay.
I, first of all, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, especially on Mike's part. I, we interviewed an individual a couple of weeks ago who is paying 12 cents per kilowatt hour because it is renewable electricity instead of six cents per kilowatt hour because that was generated by the traditional fossil fuels. I understand that we're just going to send this to the sustainability committee, so I don't have a problem with that. But I can assure you, and I want to assure the taxpayers, that unless the renewable energy, whether it's for heat transportation or renewable electricity, unless it's the same or less than fossil fuel-generated electricity or transportation and heat energy, I will vote against it. I am not going to spend taxpayers' money on something that's more expensive than what's something that is already available. We are not here to perform social experiments. We're here to wisely spend taxpayers' money. That being said, I believe by 2050, although I probably won't be here to see it, we will be on renewable. But that depends on engineering breakthroughs and scientific discoveries, not on legislative mandates. Good work. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I... Hey, John, how are you doing?
How are you doing?
I personally am having a lot of trouble with this concept and the potential monies that need to be spent. I would, I do want to say I had the opportunity to send, to spend the last couple of meetings, or attend the last couple of meetings of the COG group. Mike is chairman of the COG group this year and has done a lot of work on this. I will tell you that John has been doing a ton of work on this and Rick has been doing a hell of a lot of work on this too. So if you wonder what some of us do in the meantime, we also not only try to take care of here, but we work with other municipalities to accomplish something. I have asked Rick that before we have to go back again in April, that he would price out the 17 things that John talked about that if we were to accept all of them, is the amount of money that we would spend, including, and that includes the purchase power agreement. I don't know what I'm going to do. I can't find, well, first of all, I know from experience, my own prior job, that there's a lot of people in this universe that are looking at renewable sources of energy of all kinds and all types with all kinds of goals. And I don't see where we as a township benefit by this, by doing this when all these other agencies are working on it and many agencies that have to get some of their things done to accomplish some of this stuff that has to be done. So I don't, I am not throwing any water on this now, but I am saying that I have, I need a lot of information before I can make a decision. And the first piece of information I need is what is going to cost us to just do our component part if we choose to do the 17 recommendations or whatever number we're going to do? Because that's, that's the starting point. God only knows what this thing would cost in the end. I will tell you that Cadmus was a very professional organization. It's certainly not the work that they did or the work that anybody did on this board or anybody else. It's just in my own mind, is this something that we should spend taxpayer money on to do when all these other entities in the universe are doing the same thing? So that's, I just want to go on record as saying that. I am not making a decision tonight, other than doing what the motion says, but I just want to alert people to the fact that I am concerned about whether or not this is the appropriate thing to do, which is a little bit different than what John is saying, although I agree with John 100%. Why would we ever do something that costs us more money than otherwise? It just doesn't make any sense to me. So that's where I am, if anybody else wants to make a comment or figure...
I'd like to respond to both John and you, Marty. I agree with both of you 100%. As I say, this is a really big lift. It's a start. Now, the municipalities have committed, this was a $75,000 study. So the municipalities committed $7,000, $8,000 each to, or what have you, to $10,000 to make this study happen. I don't know exactly where it's going to go. You're right, there are other entities, state and federal, that are going to be the big movers on this, depending on policies that come out of the federal government, particularly in the years ahead, and corporate, private sector. I think municipal government have a role and it may be in a much more limited sense, if nothing else, being education outreach to bring people knowledge about technologies that are available, making individual choices. I think there are things that we can do in the municipal government looking ahead towards renewable energy for our own operations and fleet and our facilities that are within the bounds of responsible facilities management within current technologies. But John, I'm agreeing with you to pay 12 cents when you can get it for six cents. That's, that's a big lift and I agree 100%. We are fiduciaries with our taxpayer and our residents, hard-earned dollars. But this is just the beginning. I'm not sure, you know, we've set up the very basics for a roadmap here. I'm not sure, you know, we've set up the very basics for a roadmap here. I think there is a role for local government, but we're going to define that, and we're going to see how it looks from this plan with the input that we're going to receive over the next couple of months from our member municipalities. And, but I think that this kind of education and possible actions is something that is within our wheelhouse in these years ahead, these next five years ahead, this next decade, these next two or three decades ahead. I think we're going to be more and more involved in this. So, but I think it's a big lift right now, and I'm not sure exactly where we're going. So I'm with you guys. I appreciate that.
I applaud everybody's faith in state and federal government to do something about this. I don't believe it for one minute. All good change in state and federal starts at local level, and you have to act locally, and the states and the federal government will adopt what's going on. Excellence happens at local government. And there are some things we can do as an individual municipality, which we're already starting to do. You know, put a plug in for the March 24th Renewable Energy Solar and Geothermal Seminar that we're doing here at the Township Building to help educate our residents on use of solar and geothermal energy for their homes. I think conflating somebody who would pay 12 cents instead of six cents for electricity is a false equivalency. We're talking about taxpayer dollars here. That's a personal decision that each individual can make. Geothermal might cost more than, you know, a heat pump costs more than a regular hot water heater. I'm going to make a decision to buy a heat pump because it's more energy efficient, and I'm going to pay more for it, and that's my personal decision. But I'm going to be a good steward of taxpayers' money. So I applaud the COG for putting this together. I think that the Sustainability Committee can look at these 18, actually, recommendations and make some comments and recommendations of support. I think we can act as a township, and I think we can act collectively with COG, I think we can act with the county. That's where change is going to happen, not the state and federal level.
If I could just make a quick comment, I think that change actually begins with the individual. So a lot of people need to start making better choices individually if they are able to. And I think that sometimes government will follow what people start doing, too.
Yeah. I'd just like to say something, this is a policy matter, but I do want to raise it to your attention, because the thing I care about is dollars a cent, it sounds like that's...
Sure.
That's, the PPA, the Power Purchase Agreement, whereby through a competitive bidding process, we identify a construction company to usually build a renewable energy source for municipal operations for the various municipalities. So this has been done by the City of Philadelphia, they have a solar field in Franklin County or somewhere like that, Adams County. This has been done by SEPTA recently, yeah, the Redding State College. And so the experience is when they go out to bid on these things, right now they're paying six cents a kilowatt hour, they're paying 4.5 cents for a 20- or 30-year contract. So they're, and that, you know, at those sort of rates, his motion could be looking at savings of $40,000 or $50,000. So there is, it is important to note that, while yes, obviously there are some strategies that, you know, there would be, to implement would cost money, there are some that might have the opposite impact. So look for those kind of savings that could be.
And John, just on the power purchase agreements, there are things called virtual power purchase agreements where you're not directly funding assets, but you're virtually funding them, and it's almost like getting green energy through your PTO line. So there are other types, what they call contract differences with regard to the cost, and over a 20-year period of time, you can save quite a bit of money. So I think judging, making the assumption that green energy is always going to cost more than fossil fuels is, we'll find, I think, over time, that argument will erode.
All right. Well, let me say that if it's going to be cheaper, I'll be right behind David in voting for it. Only if it's cheaper.
Now, make sure you're sitting real close to that microphone, to the microphone, and give your name and address.
Jovanano-Herly. I just want to say, this, I agree with everybody. I just want to get that up front.
That's nice, Joe.
I think what you have to do is take what's available today on a sustainable deal and bring it to present values. How much is this going to cost me for how long is it going to go out? It's a simple matter. But I think what you have to do, too, is know and understand what's coming in the future from five to 10 years down. And I know this sounds like, you know, Star Trek, but has anybody ever heard of nanocrystal technology?
Yeah.
Okay. That's coming in five to 10 years. So you might pay for, you know, a windmill at a cost of $10 million, and get it down to four cents. But in five years, you might have perpetual energy for every device that you have, including a heater, TV, cellphone. So where did it get you? Not far. So the only thing I'm saying is you have to bring it down to present values, and that's the only way you can handle it. But that's my question.
That's good, Joe. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I was at the West Ocean Township Public Meeting. There were three gentlemen identified themselves as a member of the Westchester Area School District. One member was a member of the maintenance. I did video record that, I have it chained custody of that video. The gentleman, based on his own admission, is an employee of the Westchester Area School District. They are having a heck of a maintenance system. When you talk about solar panels, is it evolving technology? Are you dealing with the lithium ion chemistry? My educational background is physics and engineering. You are dealing with lithium ion chemistry, or you're dealing with reverse metering. And in less five, six years, all this technology is going to change. Remember the brick phone? Remember the satellite phone? Now you're talking to a computer that's more smarter than all of us. I served as vice president of American Society of Home Inspectors for terms, and board member of PA Home Inspector Coalition for terms, and council of representative to the National American Society of Home Inspectors for four years. We have had extensive advanced training, both in solar and geothermal. Our position was just inspect. My recommendation would be, bring somebody who has no dog in a fight, I'm using American terminology, hire an electrical engineer, let him come here, payment dates, worth of wage. He has no dog in this fight. He can tell you what the pitfalls are, what the criteria is. There's another thing you should consider, it's in dollars, it's called Bloom Energy. The concept was, it was an Indian gentleman, an American citizen, he worked for NASA for this farm business, and he developed this box roughly size of three packs of cigarette box put together. And the idea was this is going to be mounted on every home and can supply the energy. Now, Google is using this energy in a large format. You don't hear about it. Unfortunately, in this country, whenever you come up with some kind of a good idea, oil companies don't want to hear about that. Remember sodium, high-pressure sodium, now LEDs are cheap. This technology is evolving. I don't care how much money you spend, in another five years, that's going to be bye-bye technology. So I highly recommend, before you put a dime in there, think long-term. This technology is evolving. When you hire a consultant, you can hire me as a consultant, I will take your money, give you any report you want. I can tell Mr. Shane he can walk on the water. So my suggestion is just, is just that. Bring somebody who has no dog in this fight. Westchester Area School District, they're based on their own admission. Based on their own admission, that's a useless technology. It is the excellent idea, if I want to put it in my house, you should encourage that. Again, start from individual citizen or resident. But if government put that kind of money in it, I think you should do it a little bit of long-term. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity.
I'll make three comments.
I appreciate the technology advances. I appreciate it.
I'll make three comments. Number one, the meeting on March 24th is directed toward individual residents and homeowners, and there will be information on doing cost amortization versus efficiency. Number two, I have this phone, but I also had a Motorola Razr flip phone. I did not wait for this phone to buy my flip phone. So if you sit around and wait for technology, we're not going to have any advances. So, number two. Number three, of course, we're going to do our homework, and of course, we'll have experts. None of us up here are solar experts or geothermal experts, and that's our job, is to get that information and make rational decisions and be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. So we'll absolutely do that. Thanks for that comment.
Thanks. Okay. Go on.
Who are we, are?
Already, I mean, I go through.
What is the favorite motion?
Wait, wait, wait.
So there's a motion made. Can you make a motion?
I'm not sure what the motion was.
Yes.
Not a final report. And forward a copy of it in its final version to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for its recommendation and comment to the board so we can act on matter at the first meeting.
Somebody made a second.
I did.
Now, and that's what I say, we don't yet have the final report, and John said, well, we got the final report except for some small, minor changes. And I would suggest to David, you just suggested you send the report already out now instead of the final report. That way it removes all...
That was my permission to acknowledge to see the report and forward a copy of it to the Sustainability Advisory, but we're going to wait until it's in its final version, the fourth sentence of Sustainability Advisory.
All right, good. Thanks. Thanks, folks.
Well, there's a favorite motion. All right. Yes, John. Thank you very much, folks. It was kind of interesting. I will say, for people that are here that are left, you do know that we do think about the various ramifications of some of this stuff. And thank you, Joe, for pointing out some of the things out, and you two of us to say the rest. Everybody's in a way, you get up there and you give us a golden nugget for kind of statements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. We're down to any other matter, Ricky? You got any? I don't have any. Any, any, anybody over here? Any up here?
Nothing here.
Beautiful.
Oh, we... Did want to mention a couple, two things. First, coronavirus, obviously, this is the, you know, needless to say, this is eclipsing everything right now in current events, like I said, except for a secret use. We have posted information on our website from the Chester County Department of Health. So the primary local government entity that will take the lead on coronavirus, if Senate becomes anything more serious in our region, will be the Chester County Department of Health. Then at the state level will be the State Department of Health, and obviously, the federal level for now will be the CDC. So on our website, we have great link to the Chester County Department of Health as information about what businesses should do, what schools should do, et cetera, et cetera. Please check that out when you have time. Another thing that we're doing at the local level is we're sanitizing the building, all the public spaces, every morning. If you come in the building at 8:00, you can still smell the disinfectant, the air is magical. We have hand sanitizer, industrial strain sanitizer here, I think when you came in, you should have seen it at the front desk. And I know the chief, we go, the fire company and as well as our public works department are taking additional precautions in, you know, consistent with the protocols that are being put out by the CDC and other regulatory entities. So it's on our radar, but again, the Chester County Department of Health is ultimately in the lead and taking the lead. Also point out some stormwater issues at Taylor Avenue and also Enterprise Drive. We're looking at like $12,000 in repairs to damage Storm Sewer Line, Enterprise Drive, maybe more in the $20,000, Taylor Avenue. That's, we do have a cushion in our budget for miscellaneous stormwater expenses, so it's not a concern. Just want to let you know that there could be some repairs going on there soon.
Is either, are they, are they, the stormwater problems that we have, are they all associated with the current weather rate?
That's just whole infrastructure.
By the way, how close is the Enterprise Drive to where we are going to be today?
It's down by the...
Pretty far. Okay, there's no laser on the floor tonight. Rick, you want, Rick or John, do you want to talk about the next item, which is the laser, concerning the firemen's...
There's three. We've received the financial statements for the three pension plans. Frozen defined benefit plan, and I want to say that was 135% funded. The firefighter's plan is 89% funded, which is great because they had to change in benefits last year because of the market. Obviously, now with the correction in the market, these numbers are already outdated, so take them with a grain of salt, but I was very happy with where the firefighter's pension plan is funded. And the defined contribution plan, the new defined contribution plan doesn't have a funding level, so it is what it is.
Okay. So anybody else have anything up here for the audience? Anybody out there have anything for the audience? Boss, this is your last chance. No, you can't. Boss says one more thing to say.
Is this comment a public comment?
No, it's done. Everybody was done.
Number 14, public comment.
Now, that's just somebody, last number for the front.
No, no, I think...
No, no, we did, but just for yous, it's been 10 years since you've been here, and you promised me it's going to be 10 more years before you come again.
No, I didn't hear every single meeting I can actually remember, again. Mr. Chairman, in reference to Mr. Ivy's assertion, it's in fact, they both incorrect, both in fact, and in law. In fact, I have the video recording of what transpired on a police commission meeting. What I stated was, Mr. Ragney, which is a detective at that point, he was going around in Mike Ivy's shop, not Mr. Ivy himself, but in Mike Ivy's shop, telling everybody, I am an international terrorist. I went to the police commission meeting, I was at the police commission meeting on the same sit at the police commission meeting, and video camera was running. I brought that to the attention of whoever was in charge at that time. I think Mary was the police commissioner, if I remembered correctly. And I asked them, if he has some allegation against me, he should really bring it forward, otherwise he shouldn't go around defending my character. So this is how corruption starts, when you engage in unsubstantiated allegation. Now, they want to look at that video recording? Subpoenas don't be made. With respect to coronavirus, I highly recommend looking to charcoal impregnated filter, because you can do all the hand sanitizing. You have particulates fine of air. I'm also air quality inspector, and I received my advanced training, Williamsburg, Pennsylvania, and Rutgers University. One other thing they taught us was air, and if you breathe that, that's another form of transmission. Wouldn't be a bad idea. You have HVAC system, it has a filter, place a charcoal impregnated filter. You see that on all the surgical hospitals, when you go in, air is so crisp and fresh because it's gone through charcoal. Charcoal kills that bacteria. That is basically it, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Thank you.
This place, well, interesting. Even with that, we will take a motion determined, still, not a clock, which is...
Okay, I'll make a motion to be adjourned.
Okay, we're going to sign those guys. Thank you, everybody.
Hold on a second, favor.
Hi. China, been to China, too. You know. We got to admit, our meetings are better than Westchester. I'm worried about you, as a senior. Once.
I was trying to do this.
I was, too. I was. I was pretty confident.
Yeah, thanks to Greg, a great team on the, on the school call. Didn't do it this year, make a good, yeah.
You've got the bill for it.
We're in China. 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 I am harmless. I am harmless. I am harmless. This is what it is.